All right, settle down.
Oh, boy, the sheriff's back. Yeah, he's on time.
Let's call this regular meeting of the Ketchikan City Council order, please call a roll.
Kuz?
Here.
Seaberton?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Flora?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kiper?
Here.
Please join me.
Lethal, ladies and gentlemen, flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The first thing we have on the agenda is a public hearing, a resolution seventeen twenty-six eighty-four, amending the two thousand seventeen general government operating capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations to the fire department in an amount of three hundred ninety-one dollars. The port department in an amount of one million two sixteen ninety-nine oh seven, authorizes current budget transfer amount of one million seven hundred twenty-four thousand six ninety-six. Is there anybody here to discuss those today? See you then. We will close that public hearing. This is out of communications. We have a lot of things on the, um, on the desk and some updates on, um, some of the items, so let's make sure we grab those and, um, use the correct one when it comes to that on the agenda. That brings us to persons to be heard, and our first one is Kathleen. Is she here? She signed up and left?
She just, uh...
She sometimes comes in early.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll wait for Kathleen. Chris, coming? Come on up.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I'm here today, uh, you know, a little bit later, you're gonna, uh, award the janitorial contract for City Hall. Agenda item, I don't know what. Um, and I'm just here today, um, you know, for the last two and a half years, I've been up here cleaning this place every single day. Um, and I'm here because, you know, I brought my son along, and I'm here, I brought him, and I'm here because I wanted to teach him that, you know, when people belittle you, when people bully you, when people put you down, that you stand up for yourself. You don't sit back and take it. That's not how you deal with it. Um, you know, for the, for the last two and a half years, what, um, you know, I'm a human, you know, I don't, I'm not perfect. When I clean, I miss stuff. It's just natural. It's part of the job, right? And it's part of, you know, and it's also part of the job to hear complaints and just deal with them in a professional manner and go in and address them. Um, but, you know, it's one thing to be professional, and it's another thing to put somebody down, to make somebody feel like crap, um, because they, there's crumbs on the floor, or you missed something, or you left the door open, you know? That's just, that's not okay. Um, and you're gonna, you know, you're gonna award the contract to another, another company, and, you know, that's whatever, for twice as much, for probably about the same quality of work, but it's beside the point. Um, and, you know, it's not gonna change. Nothing's gonna be different. Uh, these people are gonna come in, um, you're probably, you know, gonna have, uh, some growing pains. Maybe for a couple of months, you have a honeymoon period where everything's good, and then it's gonna be the same old complaints. People are gonna be getting put down, and, um, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know. I've never, I worked five other places. I worked five, five other contracts, and I don't have any kind of issues like I have here. So it leads me to leave. It's not, it's not me. It's the people, it's the people here. Yeah, I don't know. Um, and I, I've been hesitant, incredibly hesitant about what I'm gonna say next. I've, I've been really debating on whether or not it's the right choice. Um, but, you know, in two and a half years, you see a lot here, and you kinda get a feel for what's going on here and what works and what doesn't. Um, so, uh, you know, since I'm gonna be out of here in a month, I thought the council should know a couple of things, um, that, you know, that I've seen here. Uh, the first thing, and this is incredibly concerning, um, you know, I used to be a banker. I was a bank manager for a number of years, so information security is something I, I'm a little bit of an expert in, and that I know a thing or two or three about. Um, and it's, the, the, there's none of that here. Not, it, nobody's taking care of information here, you know? When you, uh, when you apply for a job here, there's, you should have no expectation that your resumes or applications are gonna be treated, disposed of properly. Uh, employees, when you, uh, you know, when you get sick and file a workman's comp, those health records aren't gonna be treated with, with respect and disposed of properly. Uh, when you get written up, or your evaluations, those aren't gonna be disposed of properly. Um, and just the last few days, you know, knowing that I was gonna be here doing this, um, I grabbed some examples out of the trash that were tossed in the trash. I mean, I've got disciplinary letter, somebody's evaluation, um, uh, the union would love to get ahold of this. This is your bargaining strategy for contracts. Um, this isn't how you dispose of a confidential document. This isn't okay. That's not sufficient. That's lazy and complacent. And this last document is particularly interesting. I don't know if there's a newspaper man here to get this, um, you know, but apparently, for the last who knows how long, the city has been overcharging us regular people, us average Joes, um, in the wastewater, for water and wastewater. We've been subsidizing big business, the fish processors, and, um, you know, the, uh, we could be entitled to millions of dollars in refunds, hundreds of thousands, I don't know. Um, somebody needs to step up and do something about this. Um, the city was content to just sweep it under the rug. They try to hope that nobody finds out, or nobody knows about this. Um, I don't know. I don't know. You know, um, I found, I've seen evidence of drug and alcohol use on the job. Um, you know, um, one employee on the fourth floor likes to come in high on phentermine, which is methamphetamine in pill form. Um, founded in, you know, I'm a recovering addict. I know that exactly what that was when I saw it. Um, you know, when you, uh, when you have a legal prescription, you know, Walmart, or Island, or Safeway, they don't give you a blister pack that's four years expired, printed in Spanish. That comes either you bring it up from Mexico, or you buy it in an online pharmacy. Both illegal. Um, I, you know, and I've seen other evidence of alcohol and drug use. Um, you know, I don't feel comfortable naming names.
No name names.
No, no.
Yeah, um, but I wanna bring this to your attention, you know? I, it, it just seems unfair that somebody can get away with it because they work here, while us regular people, you know, we get locked up.
Did you see? Add some other points?
Um...
And also, um, we could have, also like to have a meeting with you.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Just, um, get ahold of me at, um, uh, or leave your name and number, or anything to have it, and, um, I'll talk to you.
Okay. Thank you.
You have it. All right, is Kathleen available? There you are. Kathleen, I have a story for you. I missed it here so much that I actually, when I was laying around recovering, I wish I could be at the council that you listened to Kathleen Giberer report. I'm so happy you're top on the list system.
I could've sent her down to you, actually.
Well, thank you.
You bet.
My name is Kathleen Lyte. I'm the director of the Arts Council. Uh, I haven't been here in a while, actually, and, um, so I wanted to give you a little, a few updates of what the Arts Council and the arts in Ketchikan have been up to. Um, the Winter Arts Fair, we just had that, I think it was just two weekends ago. Um, as you guys know, we did move the Winter Arts Fair from Ted Ferry and, and Kate Fox Lodge down to the Saxon Community Center. Um, we had basically outgrown those two venues, um, and as you know, parking has been a constant struggle since the funicular has been having issues. Um, so it, so we were looking for a place where we could grow, um, and add more artists, and relieve some of the pressure on the, on the audience, and allow them to get to the vendors a little more easily. Went down to Saxon, and we've had overwhelming, an overwhelming positive response, which, uh, was great. We've had a couple vendors whose experience was not the same, um, and hopefully we can fix those, um, problems that they had, but, uh, basically, um, it was a very positive response. We had about twenty-three-hundred people come. Our average is two-one-ish to twenty-eight was our high in two thousand fifteen, um, or fourteen, two thousand fourteen, excuse me. So twenty-three is right about in there, and we're happy with that number. We had about the same, we had, um, it's always a moving target as you get closer to the festivals, fairs, um, vendors who's ready, who's not ready. Um, this year, we had lots of new artists, and we had a lot of, um, returning artists sublet their booths, so we had about seventeen returning artists that needed to sublet, which means they keep their, they keep their, um, place, but they, they couldn't come this year, so well, they'll be coming back. So that's an addition of about twenty new artists that we had this year, which is awesome. Um, we just had the Winter Art Walk. That was about a week ago. We had twenty-two businesses participating in that, including Ketchikan Youth Initiatives and Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. Um, we have a hard time guessing how many people participate in the Winter Art Walk, 'cause nobody's out there clicking on the, uh, as people walk by. We estimate eight hundred to a thousand people participate, um, so that's a good, uh, showing. Um, we have released the call to artists for the wearable art show. Uh, we've released the call to the young people in our community and surrounding area for the Ketchikan Youth in Art exhibit. Usually that happens in December in the gallery, but, uh, we have an exhibit that's running through the middle, and I'll tell you about that, and you already know about that in a second. Um, so the youth art exhibit will be on display for a full month in January. Um, we have our, um, SMART classes coming up, and the next SMART class, this is for grades one through twelve, and we split them up by age group. This is, uh, portraiture. Grace Freeman, a young artist in Ketchikan, will be doing portraiture. You would probably know her as a digital artist, um, but she makes awesome little, uh, watercolor, um, art cards and portraits, and so she's gonna be doing portraiture, which is gonna be awesome. Um, as you know, we have Decolonizing Alaska in the Main Street Gallery right now. Uh, Asia Freeman, the curator, uh, was down here at the beginning of November to, to help install it. It is there until December fifteenth. If you haven't had a chance to come see that exhibit, I, I, um, would highly, highly recommend you take, uh, an hour and come to the Main Street Gallery. This exhibit has about thirty artists, non-native and native artists, and they're, they're discussing through their art the concept of decolonization, and, um, it's a conversation, and it's a sticky conversation, and the, what the artists are saying with their work is very powerful, moving, it's, um, it's encouraging in some cases, and just heartbreaking in other cases. And in the exhibit itself, we have five Rasmussen distinguished artists. Out of the six Rasmussen distinguished artists, since I've given that, been giving that away, five of them are in the exhibit, and the sixth one helped put it together. Um, three of those distinguished artists are from Ketchikan, uh, and that, of course, is Dolores Churchill, Nathan Jackson, and Ray Troll. We have three artists that have won the Joan Mitchell, um, Painter and Sculptor Award. Two of them won it this year. That's Drew Michael and Sonia Kelher Combs. The third one is our own Donnie Varnell, and he won it in two thousand fourteen. We have two National Endowment for the Arts Heritage Fellows, and that, of course, is Dolores Churchill and Nathan Jackson. That is the highest honor our country gives, one of the highest honor our country gives to artists, and, um, two of them live in our community. Um, sorry, and three of them are in the exhibit. Terry Rothkar is the third in the exhibit. Um, so it is a star, star-studded exhibit, um, but it's also very powerful, and if you can't make it during our regular hours, I would be happy to open up the gallery and let you come and see that, because it is that important, and it's that powerful, and so I really, really invite you to come to the gallery. I have this really long list of arts events that happen in the next two months. This is what the arts are doing in Ketchikan. Um, most of the, not most of them, some of them are ours, some of them are schools, some of them are just regular people doing stuff. It's pretty incredible. It's a visual celebration of what the arts do in Ketchikan, so I wanna give these to you guys. And that's it, and I apologize for not being here at the beginning and having to wait for me.
No problem. Thank you very much, Kathleen.
Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? All right, John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I've only had two people down the list to speak to the council. Is there somebody else in the audience who'd like to talk to the council? See you then. We'll move into the meeting. Thank you. All right, that brings us down to consent agenda. I've got a few to add to it. If you don't want them to speak up. Under new business seven A, I have three, four, five, six, eight, and nine. Under seven B, I have one, two, and five. Any objections? See you then. We'll add those to it. Do you have a motion to consent?
Yes, I can move.
Second.
Second, have a close to your address.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of November twentieth, two thousand seventeen, and special city council meeting of November twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. Change order number one final to contract number seventeen twenty. That's three forty-seven, Boden Street, contaminated, twelve cleanup with direct construction incorporated. A member on the book of agreement for realignment of a portion of Seventh Avenue and survey of the Halt Lane school tract. Resolution number seventeen twenty-six eighty-four, amending the two thousand seventeen general government operating capital budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the fire department and the port department, and authorizing certain budget transfers. A budget transfer, and that's for additional Bar Harbor North maintenance dredging. Cost of living adjustment of one point six percent for non-represented employees of general government for fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Exempting the procurement of Whitman Lake Hydroelectric Project electric valve actuator system from competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. That's with road torque controls incorporated. A declaration of surplus property, and that's obsolete telecommunications division equipment. Exempting the procurement of thirty-four point five KV pole mounted breaker from competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code with annexed or incorporated. A cost of living adjustment of one point six percent for the non-representative and, non-representative employees of Ketchikan Public Utilities for the fiscal year two thousand eighteen. Budget transfers for the fire department overtime report for the quarter ended September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Budget transfers for the police department and E nine-one-one central communications overtime report for the quarter ended September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Change order number one final to contract number seventeen twenty-eight, the wastewater treatment, outfall stabilization, that's with BAM LLC. The award of contract number seventeen oh eight, sea level drive, storm drain, and surface improvements, Glacier State Contractors Incorporated. Ordinance number seventeen eighteen sixty-one, amend the Ketchikan Municipal Code, section two point oh four point zero two three, entitled teleconferencing, first reading. A budget transfer for the award of contract number seventeen thirty-seven, janitorial service for City Hall, Hummy Bird Services. Budget transfers for the telecommunications division overtime report for the quarter ended September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. The award of contract number seventeen thirty-three, Whitman Lake Dam handrail installation with Western Dock and Bridge. And finally, the award of contract number seventeen thirty-nine, transformative testing equipment, AVO Multi-Amp Corporation DBA maker.
Thank you very much. Anybody have anything they wanna talk about? We'll start with Dick and then Judy.
Okay, uh, two things, Lou. Uh, one on, uh, one dealing with, uh, sea level drive, drain, and improvements contractor. Those contracts are pretty close. There's two local contractors that are within six and nine thousand dollars, and so I think somehow or other, we need to look at what the differentiation is and how we deal with local contractors versus out-of-staters. I know this Glacier State are pretty good contractors, but still, uh, the difference is maybe not enough to keep, not keep people in town, so I think we need to take a look at it. The second one is, uh, I guess, my annual, uh, beef about, uh, cola, and, uh, to me, the cost goes up for everybody. It does, and it goes up equally for living. You know, a gallon of milk, gallon of gas, the only thing that goes up more maybe is, uh, well, nothing goes more is we jack up our water and sewer rates. So it's equally across the board, and we've got the lower grade, the lower grade employees are gonna get maybe eight hundred bucks, and the higher ones are gonna get up to twenty-five, twenty-six hundred, so it's my beef until we wanna fix it.
Kate?
Yeah, I wanna make a comment about, um, seven A nine. As someone who deals with confidential papers all the time, I trust those comments will be looked into, and I'm sure we must have procedures, but, um, I mean, we just can't have that as far as I'm concerned, so I'm gonna vote for this, obviously, but I just hope we're gonna look at that.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Yes, that should be looked at. Anybody else have any questions on the air? Yes, Carl.
Just note that there is a substitute motion for seven A nine, that's the intent of the council, that's what we have.
Yeah, we're going with the, we'll go with the substitute motion. Okay, call the roll.
Kuz?
No.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to one. Brings us to appointments of boards on, uh, we only have Mando Welch and Chris French to go back on historic commission. Anybody have any objections? See you then. We'll put them on there. Um, the budget thing we'll do after we get through everything on the, on the meeting. Um, that brings us down to seven A, new business, implementation of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two Ketchikan Library Strategic Plan.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council authorized staff to proceed with the implementation of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-two Ketchikan Public Library Strategic Plan as detailed in the library director's, uh, report dated November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Seven.
Carl, did you guys have anything you wanted to say about it?
I don't think so, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, the library director's report, uh, details out the, the plan very well. I would emphasize that adoption of the plan is not necessarily buying into any one or more specific elements. Anything that requires council action will be brought back to council. Um, and Ms. Tully is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, your honor.
Go ahead, Bob.
Um, there's a couple of things in here that are concerning to me. Um, one of them is the fact that they're looking at their own IT person. I think we've had the discussion, and it might have been in regards to the, the police station, and, um, I'm not in favor of expanding our IT so everybody has a individual, individual IT person. I think we have a great staff in IT, and that the library, or as well as any other department, should be able to work through our IT department.
Uh, I, I understand, and, and yes, I agree that the city's IT department is a great department. Um, a lot of these specific, um, items here were suggested at various points in this process, and we wanted to acknowledge and honor that suggestion, those suggestions, uh, but we will be, um, uh, giving serious consideration to all of them, and some of them may not turn out to be feasible or desirable.
Yeah, and the same one. I appreciate you guys looking after your building and deciding to put in a plan for maintenance and everything else, but again, I, I would assume that you're gonna do that with, uh, the building maintenance department.
Absolutely.
Totally, so that would be good. Uh, and I know that there's a lot of things in here in regards to, um, how the library will be used in the future and stuff, and some of it's gonna require funding, and in a strategic plan, there was nothing, I mean, they talked a little bit about grants and stuff, but I think it should include an overview or a plan for funding as we move forward in regards to that, because if we're adding staff, because we're expanding the duties, then that's, that's a consideration that we, we have to figure out how we're gonna fund it.
Absolutely. Before we move forward with any particular, um, project or initiative, um, that would require additional funding, we would definitely cost all that out and then bring that to the council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dick?
Uh, I don't wanna drag it out, but I wanna echo what Bob said, and funding's very important, because when we built that library, it was built very deliberately for some things, and it can't blow up just because it's there.
Anybody else? Call a roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
All right, the pass is of nothing. Brings us down to, thank you. Brings us down to seven eight, um, seven eight-two, initial concept design of the Tongus Historical Museum permanent exhibit, and directing staff of C with the development of the permanent exhibit. Do we have a motion?
Your honor, I move the city council to approve the initial concept designs of the Tongus Historical Museum permanent exhibit as detailed in the museum director's report dated, uh, November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, and direct staff to proceed with the development of the permanent exhibit, according to...
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Anybody have any questions? Did you guys wanna say anything?
We can answer questions. We can go through this. I, there are a couple of points that if you'll humor me, that I would love to just make upfront, one of which is answering a question we received yesterday from several different concerned community members, um, just sort of misunderstanding some of the memorandum of thinking that we were asking for more funding, um, for the permanent exhibit. We're still asking for the same three hundred thousand based on that model of a hundred and fifty dollars per square feet for about two thousand. It's just more the timing of it. It's really, um, sort of shaking out that having a hundred thousand for this year, and then two hundred thousand as the contractors are starting to finish work, or starting to, um, you know, look at printing and, and the actual transition from development and what's in our heads to what's actually physically present. Um, so you'll see that in the CIP budget on Monday, but I just wanted to make that point, 'cause I did have several concerned citizens ask me about that yesterday. Um, yeah, we're happy to answer questions, or we can give you a very brief overview.
Any questions? Bob?
So I noticed in here that, um, there was an advisory board meeting on September nineteenth. Has this plan changed significantly since September nineteenth?
No, it has not.
It's the same plan?
Correct. It continues to develop and deepen, but it's the same basic plan, yes.
So has the, have you vetted it completely? I mean, I know you brought it to us here now, but have you vetted it through the advisory board? And the reason why I ask that is, I remember when we first started the remodel.
Yes.
We went through a painful situation, and, and I learned my lesson.
Me too.
So, you know, I, I, I wanna make sure that this is vetted through the advisory board and comes with, um, the recommendation.
I feel so, and I, one thing, too, is just, that sort of reminds me to invite not only council members, invite the public, but it's one thing to look at these plans on a piece of paper disconnected from the space. The best thing about the museum advisory board walkthrough was actually being in the physical space and walking through and seeing how, um, seeing how these concepts can come to life in the physical space. So that invitation is open to, to any of you, and I really encourage you to take advantage of that, um, 'cause it's one thing to talk about logging as sort of a disemboweled head that we know we wanna talk about Ketchikan history. It's another thing to be in the space, start actually thinking about what those images are, thinking about what those artifacts are, and, and just a more meaningful and, and, uh, I don't know, rich, rich experience, and that's what we tried to provide for our advisory board.
Dick?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'm not comfortable that without a document from the advisory board, they've actually blessed this.
Yeah, I can provide the minutes from that meeting.
I think they're on here, I think.
No, it was in the library.
I don't think.
Uh, the other one is I, I'm going to nitpick one of your documents here. It can't escape, says can't escape from the land. I can't tell you which page it's on, but, um, it basically uses the word exploit. It specifically, I take it as, as exploiting the timber and I don't like the word.
I think it also says gather and so I guess it's.
Exploits the word.
We're not going to use exploit.
We can not use exploit, but I do think that it brings up an important, uh, it brings up an important point that this is one of our challenges as a museum, right? We have lots of different sides. We have lots of diversity and how to address those issues from the most unbiased. You know, another example that, that we've had several, um, native members of the community come forward is are you going to make it all the pretty Northwest Coast art? Or are you going to talk about that you also had signs that said no dogs are Indians? So we've got a lot of those issues that we need to navigate and, and really make sure that we have an exhibition that really, really makes that a discussion.
The people that came here, used, came here to utilize it in a way to make economic development, not exploit it. And I'm dead serious about it.
Your Honor. Um, I was at two of the meetings at the library with multiple community members that actually were invited to participate in this, um, building this piece. And so there was a lot of people from the different, um, groups. And like she said, there was the, um, bringing up the bias, um, both on, from both sides, the yin and the yang. And most of them came to an agreement, um, on how they, I mean, on how they felt, but, um, there was, there was a lot of, uh, participation from different, um, people from here, people from several generations to people who came in the Pope Mall open. And it was interesting because there was, um, things that I learned that I didn't realize, um, growing up here about the biases from people from the Pope Mall days. One of those of us who'd been like three or four generations, so.
One other place that, that came to mind for a lot of the historians that approached us thinking about exploitation in specific. It actually, logging never came up as a, as a concern for exploitation. What can, really came up was the use of fish traps when Heckman first did the fish traps and what that, what that effect was on our salmon production and how that affected individuals' ability to live off of the, live off of the ocean and, and, and do that. And so it, it's, I guess ironic that you bring that up because logging wasn't ever listed. It, it really got back to that historic use of fish traps and, and how that actually helped lead to statehood and how the southeast had, had different, uh, you know, state control, federal control and, and what fish traps, um, fish traps had to, to do with that specific exploitation of, of the salmon resource. So again, lots of, lots of views trying to balance them, try to really root that all in, in historic fact.
Anybody else with a question?
So are we going to, you include someplace a memo to Carl or something in regards to maybe something from the advisory board?
Yep, I will, uh, pass those minutes along.
And, and the advisory board actually, I mean, and they did, yeah, we, we like this plan, right?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
No.
Okay, that passes six to one. That brings us down to seven eighty-seven Northern Lights cultivation two request for to all city protests. We have two alternative motions. Grab one.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council to withdraw its protest of September eighth, two thousand seventeen regarding the application for marijuana cultivation facility for Northern Lights cultivation two and approve the application should the appeal go forward and the application again be considered by the alcohol and marijuana control board.
You changed the motion.
I did.
No? Did I read you about one? Okay, but that was alternative number one?
Yes, to withdraw the protest.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move it second. Julie, do you want to say anything?
Um, no, they, they cleared what they were supposed to. Your concerns from the last meeting were, were addressed and I don't see why we shouldn't.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, uh, for a little elaboration on this because I did some research and, and made some phone calls in regard to, uh, the information that was in our packet. And, um, a- as we can see, you know, the zoning permit was granted some time ago. Then it went through this cumbersome process and when that zoning permit was granted, the individuals started investing in their property. And it had not been vetted through this board yet. And so as we move down the line, they put thirty, forty thousand dollars in this thing and it comes to us. And if we have a problem with it, they're out that money and it makes us the bad guys. It's probably not in their best interest to do it that way, but that seems to be what's happening. There's been a little bit of disconnect from the borough providing cups and for us getting the information and being able to deal with it. In reality, our protest is a citizen's comment because it didn't meet the deadline. We didn't get it in time, correct? So, um, and then when they got their cups, the borough sent out notices to adjacent property owners. Now, I don't know in what radius that went. And they received, um, no negative comments in regards to that. I'm not sure how that mail out went, how, what kind of properties they looked at or any of that kind of stuff. So we're not privy to that information. And the one letter that we did get receiving the packet was from another commercial property owner right next to them. It, it didn't have anything to do with the residential neighborhoods or if there's any other things going on in the neighborhoods. So the state themselves has some issues that, uh, this company had an appeal because it was, uh, denied. And so they have yet to go through that, uh, appeal, um, process. But I think, um, to hold this protest, I don't think it matters one way or the other. Uh, but we should probably let the marijuana control board know if it's met our okay. And I will talk under person, I mean, under council member comments about, uh, providing some more, um, information and, and concerns.
Any?
So anyway, uh, and then I asked the clerk to do some correspondence to make sure that we weren't holding them up because we were holding something or, or, you know, we wanted to make sure that we had all the information. And so, um, after talking with Katie, um, if we have no complaints at this particular point, we should probably let the state know.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Nick.
Just to follow up on a, a point that, uh, Vice Mayor Seaberton raised. I guess, uh, uh, I, I, I agree, this, the, these, this, these individuals went ahead based relatively good faith on something the borough told them. The problem is, is it seems like a Swiss cheese process here and I'm really getting frustrated.
The whole process.
You know, we, uh, you know, we, we, we've made it really clear numerous times to the borough that we're concerned about this and they're apparently are willing to s- to put a cup on virtually any proposal they get. And I don't, I, I'm not sure what our, what our recourse at this point is, but I don't want to, you know, I mean, one minute we think, okay, this is what it's going to be, all of a sudden CUP, 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 CUP. And that, and that can't, that, that can't continue. I don't know what our recourse is, but that simply cannot continue.
It's like they're forcing our hand.
Yeah.
Like making us look bad because.
One at a time.
No, it's, it's, you know, you're right. It's essentially, it's, it's like they're saying, well, we know you got these restrictions, but ha, 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 we can, we can put up, we can potentially use permit anything we feel like. And that's wrong.
Janley, then Mark, then Dick.
Yeah, it's like, almost like the parent, that you pit dad against mom. It's just making us look bad and I don't think it's right and I about know.
Mark?
Two things, um, if they've met the bar and resolved all of the pertinent points of our objection, they see no reason to not remove it. Two, uh, comment to Councilmember Seaberton's, uh, statement about, pardon me, business risk. The process is poor. It is Swiss cheese. It's not good. And if you know that going in, that's just business risk. And if it's five thousand or forty thousand, take the chance or don't. And if it all falls apart, it falls apart. That part, uh, you know, I think, I think individuals, regardless of what type of business they're looking to enter into, just need to be aware that just sometimes it doesn't work out.
Dick?
Yeah, I, I can't support this. There's too many residents within a close distance of that place. And I don't know what the borough's rules are for CUPs, but I'm like Dave, the borough planning is totally out of control. They throw it here and they throw it there and they don't tell you what's going on. And then the third thing is, is going into a business, they knew they had to get three permits. The borough, the city and the state. So I.
And for Julie, I mean, Julie?
Um, I kind of agree with Mark in a way, but at the same time, I mean, these CUPs, I, I don't get it. That to me, I thought would be, is a residential area. There's a, a lot of people there. I know that kids get the bus right there. I mean, and, and there's people who live in apartments down there. So I don't know if maybe we didn't do our homework and find out where these CUPs were going to be. I thought we were pretty clear, but now apparently they go everywhere. I mean, what's next? I mean, next door to me by the high school, I mean.
I got a little backyard there.
My backyard and it's paved now. I mean, it's just, you know, there's no end to it.
Bob?
I think the borough is probably following the rules, um, in regards to applying for a stuff. And they can't be arbitrary capricious about, they have to have a reason in order to deny it. And, and I don't fault them for doing what the borough is supposed to do. It's the fact that there's a, a huge disconnect between all the regulatory bodies and, and how to move these things forward. And so just let you know, under the, um, council member comments, I'm going to request that we limit the number at this point until moving forward.
Anybody else before we vote? Call the roll.
Zingy?
I knew it. Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kiper?
No.
Gage?
No.
Kuz?
No.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Okay, passes four to three. That moves us to seven B three, a word of contract professional services for Bieber Falls switch gear replacement electric power systems, Inc. We have a motion.
That's number three?
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll get there. Your Honor, I move the city council authorized the general manager in a blue contract number seventeen thirty-one professional service for Bieber Falls switch gear replacement with electric power systems, Inc. of June in Alaska in the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars and authorized funding from the electrical division two seventeen Bieber Falls switch gear capital account.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move it second. Bob?
You know, I had some problems with this earlier and it was my misunderstanding and Carl and I were on different pages. Um, usually when I see, you know, a bid or, or a fee or something where there are multiple bidders, we see the, the total cost of, of that bid. Where this isn't a bid, what they did is, to my understanding, and I guess Jeremy and Carl could probably clarify better than I could. They went out and qualified the engineer firm to make sure they could do the work. And Jeremy is going to be the lead engineer on it, but he's going to need some help. And so based on the hour structure that they submitted and upon the scoring, they picked a contractor to move forward. Is that really correct?
Julia, that's correct.
Because I kept getting back to this, well, they had to have hours, you know, were they going to do work for a hundred hours at this cost? And that's not what the case was. Um, it was so, it looked a little bit odd to me. And it was over a number of emails before we finally got it figured out in my mind what was going on. So, um, I, I guess if, if there's more information that we need, uh, you can call up Jeremy or whatever to explain how this process went. Because it's a, it's a little bit different than what we're used to, I guess, seeing.
I think you put it very well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Kuz?
Yeah.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
That passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to seven four, word of contract seventeen thirty-two professional services for generator cleaning and testing program, OS Engineering, Olson Industrial Electric, Inc. We have a motion.
Your Honor, I move the city council authorized the general manager to enter into contract number seventeen thirty-two professional services for generator cleaning and testing program with OS Engineering, Olson Industrial Electric, Inc., Eugene, Oregon, in the amount not to exceed of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and authorized funding from the electric division's two thousand seventeen generator cleaning and testing capital accounts. Second.
Move it second. Dave, do you have anything? Anybody else?
Yeah, Lou, I need, um, someone to come up and explain a little bit more about what they're up to. Because in one part of the whole memo from, I guess it's Jeremy, it says that, uh, the firm's going to undertake comprehensive generator services up to it, including implementing generator testing, informal inspection, testing and cleaning. And then it goes on to say this will assist the KPU in establishing a comprehensive long, long-term planning and testing program. So are they going to actually do a bunch of work for us and then they're going to do some planning for us or what?
Currently right, uh, Jeremy Beinam, system engineer, uh, currently right now, we don't currently have a comprehensive plan for our thirteen generating units. This contract will help us develop a comprehensive, uh, evaluation program. And then based off of what we find when we do these evaluations on our units will lead to, uh, additional work. Part of that is helping us develop a, uh, this overall program, performing onsite inspections and testing. So these are activities that, uh, we are not capable of performing just on our own because it is a large scope of work that we are going to be executing with this contract.
But then after they do the first one, then we're going to be able to do our own?
It depends. It depends on, uh, after the, after we get a initial, uh, uh, comprehensive long-term plan, uh, for, for the future, then we would be able to start doing, uh, a large bulk of that testing and inspections with our own crews. But with, with the lack of an actual, uh, program and a long-term plan, we are not capable of performing those tasks now.
Thank you. Any other questions, Bob?
So, um, I understand you're going to start using them to help you design a program. Is there a component of this contract where they're going to provide individuals to clean the generators?
Yes, where necessary. So when we go through and do our initial evaluations on our thirteen units, we're going to be inspecting for, uh, degradation of, of the equipment, age and things of that sort. Uh, based off those inspections and further testing, we may need to, uh, get in and pull some of those units apart to do some further, uh, detailed cleaning and additional test and inspections. So until we actually get into those, we just don't know. But this contract does, uh, provide for those services, yes.
Yes.
So did they provide you just with an hourly component for whatever work they're going to do? Or did they actually give you a bid on cleaning the generators?
We do not have a bid for cleaning those generators. When we get to that point, we will negotiate what that scope of work would be. So we would issue that as a, as a subset task to this contract. So when we go in and we go, uh, for example, if we go in and we're doing, um, uh, an inspection on a unit and we find something that requires additional.
a contract, sometimes even RFPs, and there's competing groups, we have the total cost of that bid. Here, you're asking, you, you've put together an RFP and you're asking for funding, and we don't know what the competitive nature of that is between, I mean, I saw that we had the hourly base and I understand that you're not sure what the amount of work's going to be. But if there's competing bids for a project, and I, I understand the price isn't the only thing. I, I understand that we want to make sure we do a value, evaluation and pick the best contractor that's be able to do that.
Sure.
But I'm being asked to fund it. And if I don't have all that information or I'm not comfortable with that, it's hard for me to move forward with that. Do you understand what I'm kind of saying there?
Sure. And for, to, to help answer that question, in two thousand eighteen, we have additional funds that we're allocating specifically for the purpose of large amounts of work that we might find in this. So this particular contract for two thousand seventeen is focusing primarily on our effort of developing a long-term capital, a, a long-term inspection plan and doing those inspections. Based off of some of those inspections, we could do small scopes of work. But a hundred and eighty thousand dollars is not a lot of money to develop this plan. So we do have allocated funds for two thousand eighteen, which would then do specifically that we'd be able to scope what that particular element of work is and then request a, a bid to, to complete that work. Thank you.
Yes, Mark?
What's the average age of these generators? The range of age of these? I, I just find it phenomenal that we don't have a plan in place. Do they have generators for how long?
Our generators range in age from nineteen oh four to nineteen seventies, eighties?
And there's never been a comprehensive plan? Okay, thank you.
I can tell you this is that, I, I can't tell you what has happened many years ago. I can tell you that currently, as we stand, we do not have a comprehensive inspection testing program that we can perform ourselves.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Call the roll.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Gage?
Yeah.
That passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to vouchers, daily news for one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents.
The Honor, I move for approval of vouchers to KFC Daily News in the amount of one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars sixty-one cents.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yep.
Gage?
Yeah.
That passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to vouchers, daily news for one thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Gage?
All right, that passes seven to nothing. Brings us down to managers' report. Carl, do you have anything to add?
Just tuned, Mr. Mayor, Monday night, we have another budget session scheduled. I'll have the appropriate general government department heads here to finish up the general government capital budget, and then the KPU managers will be here. The council can start deliberations on the KPU budget. On the table tonight was the draft two thousand eighteen cruise ship schedule. We've scheduled a public meeting for a week from today, from one to two, in the council chambers. If council is interested in attending, and that's all about.
All right, I was just looking at our reserves. We're doing really good. Yeah.
Let me just think of what we've got.
Well, I was just going to say, three point six million, two point eight, two point six, and then in my slush fund, we have two point six. Everything good. All right. Anybody have any questions on the managers' report? I see the Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve things on there. Good. Sales tax, Bob, are we up two hundred and thirty-two thousand? Are we right? Right? Excellent. Anybody else? Seeing none, that moves us to thirty, whoop. Oh, yeah, we have to go back.
We took your... I hit your popper bubble, but we got to go back.
All right, we're back to six A two, resolution seventeen twenty-six ninety, seventy-nine budget. We're doing ports and harbor. Has everybody got their stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Bob, you're going to lead in this.
All right, so we can start out on X one, under harbor. That's page two ninety-four. Give you time to get there. Welcome back, Steve.
You want to start this? Do you want to let our high school kids go?
Let's take a five-minute break.
What?
So, okay.
Change the order, take your seat.
Let's go, so we can get this done.
I still would like to...
We took your...
Tell them I'm last.
I'll try to come up.
I think you just scared that kid off.
We're on X one.
X one.
Page two ninety-four. Starting out with harbor summaries. Any questions on X one?
X one?
X one. Moves this on to, we can come back to it if you find something you want to. Make sure everybody's on the page. You got it, Dave?
Go closer.
Okay, good. X two? We move on to X three, which is Harper, Harbor's operating division. Shows a table with the employee matrix. X three, they have their accomplishments, and their division summaries, funding sources, personnel listing. X five is the operation division again, and it has the operating budget changes for two eighteen. Those are the ones that are larger than five percent. X six, that's again, is operating expenditures. X seven, we get into the narratives with the above-mentioned items. X eight, the narrative section. X nine?
Yeah, Bob?
Yes.
Maybe this may be the place, the ATV that's being proposed to be purchased jointly, is that under, that's not, is that a capital account or not?
It's under minor capital.
That's what I thought it was. Okay, this is the time to talk about it. Last year, we went through this ATV process of getting, put them up, put them on a port. And I understand the value of an ATV on the docks, it's going to be your headache because there's going to be other people that are going to want to take them down there to, to work. But I know, I understand how much it would help you to move them, to move supplies and stuff down on the docks. But, I mean, yeah, into the harbors. But on the port, during, when there's a cruise ship in town, I really don't want to see that thing on, on the port.
It's not going to be there.
Okay. I mean, if it's after, when they're gone, it's fine, haul supplies around, but it's accessible with vehicle anyway.
Vehicles in that, unless they're going to be exclusive to a department, we split them fifty-fifty, which benefits the harbors because the port is financially very secure compared to the harbors.
Yeah.
This will be, this will be admittedly used more in the harbors. But there's going to be times, especially in the winter or doing other things, that the port is going to want to use it. And I, I want the port to pay its fifty percent.
Okay, then I, I'm going to ask one of the, not a favor, but we need to track use on vehicles. And this is the vehicle, as far as I'm concerned. We buy too much stuff and it never gets used. So we need to come up with a way to track the number of hours and days that it's used. Because I'm not too sure, we wouldn't be better off renting one of these on the days you need it, if it's possible. But we need to be able to track utilization of equipment like this. So this is a fifteen thousand dollar piece of equipment, which is cheap compared to a forty thousand dollar vehicle, but still, we've done it before and it never got used. So just figure out a way to track it. Put a logbook on it.
What we were looking at, I want to say it was only about seven grand total.
I thought it was seventy-five hundred dollars twice. Is what I thought I read.
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred. Seven nine, seven nine oh dash twenty.
You're going to have a trailer with a few, Steve.
When you, when you throw the port in, it's seventy-five hundred dollars you split it.
You got to take that paragraph in its entirety, increasing it by seventy-five hundred, which includes fifty percent share of purchasing the small ATV and trailer, which is thirty-five hundred is the porch, or the harbor and port split share, and additional four thousand for harbor carts.
Okay.
Thirty-five hundred is the, is the harbors' share of the ATV and the little trailer.
But seven thousand dollars total.
Four thousand is for more harbor carts. We bought a bunch of those new harbor carts, oh, about eight years ago. And we've been repairing them, repairing, repairing them. And we've lost one or two that just, we've had to kind of scrap them for parts. It's time to get some more. And they, they, they get a lot of use. And we also can tell when we're running low because more and more Safeway carts start ending up down in the harbor. And that's a sign that, oh, yeah, they're not finding harbor carts as often as they should be.
Okay, the port does say thirty-five hundred is half, okay.
So seventy-five hundred is, is the increase in minor capital, the account. And it's for those, the harbors, half of the ATV and trailer, and four thousand for harbor carts.
Okay.
Anything else, Dick?
Not on the port, or not on the harbor.
This is harbors.
And, and the cart, I, I've probably started some of that because I know that the street department had one at one time, a four-wheeler, and it has since outlived its usefulness. But I have a, a boat in a harbor and that crew works really hard down there when they're doing those concrete panel repairs. And they got all kinds of, and they're packing out their shoulder up and down the ramp all the time, throwing it in a wheelbarrow. And this is just going to make it more expedient and easier. And we're not going to get working comp stuff because they're packing pumps and mixers and other kind of stuff up and down the dock. X ten, that's coming to the end of the narrative for the operations division. X eleven, that's the capital budget. So the security camera upgrades, is that, do we have anything, Steve, looking south to the end of berth one, Thomas Basin and out into that watered area?
Right now, we have cameras on the KVV building. We added this last year, looking both north and south. What we'd like to do this coming year is add them down at the berth one area, at the south end of it. And we're still waiting on the reinstallation of some cameras in Thomas Basin that were, that were not working or taken down during the rehab last year. So we've been working with KPU on that.
And when I'm asking for it, are we going to be able to gather data off of that? Do they do a recording system?
Yes.
Where we can look at the traffic flows and stuff in that particular area? Because in the overall concept of things, we're looking at the expansion of our ports for these cruise ships. And it would be nice to have some traffic data or seeing exactly how that's being used down there.
Right. And that's what, the ones that we put in the port security building two years ago, we gave all that data to Moffett Nickel this summer, for just that reason. So we'd like to get some more further down. What we've been doing, we've been installing these new systems down the port ourselves.
Okay.
And it's, it's been going very well, but we're just, we just can't do it all at once. So we've been kind of chipping away at it in the last couple of years. But we've been very pleased with the, the results on the new stuff compared to what we used to have.
Yeah, Steve, do we have a camera up on dock four?
We no longer do. And that's something we'll be looking at.
Oh, okay. Okay, I wasn't asking for that.
Yeah, the, the ones down there, we're feeding up, up to, to KPD. But those are no longer operational.
And the, the ones that we put on the docks, are they visible to KPU or are they just visible to you?
KPU has some that people can see, but those, those aren't the ones that we use for recording. Those are visible just to us.
Okay, okay.
One of the issues down at berth four is that you got to have the right flavor power. And down at the operational end of berth four, we don't, we don't have one-ten. It's all, it's all the, the big stuff.
Oh, okay. I need one.
Okay. Anything else on capital?
I have a, something from the Port Harbor Advisory Board I'd like to pass on. The Port Harbor Advisory Board has looked at both the harbor and the port budgets, all three steps, you know, what we proposed to finance, then what finance proposes to the manager, what the manager proposes to you. They've been reviewing those. The one comment they had on this, on this most recent one is on the harbor capital projects. If you go to O one, which has the summary, you see a bunch of projects in two thousand nineteen, the, from priority five on down. Several of those were in the proposed eighteen budget, but that was, in working with Bob, we had, we set a limit where we don't like the reserves to go too low. And I had asked him, when we took Mountain Point from the state, we got two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars as part of that deal. I asked him to check if that was set aside somewhere else, because I thought that's what we were going to do, but it wasn't. That was actually included in the reserves and that can only be spent on Mountain Point. So we were holding that for when we want to replace Mountain, the launch ramp floats and, and that in a few years. So that was, it was in the reserves, but it's, but you can't use it for anything but Mountain Point. So they moved the cut line up to where you see it, there is now, up to priority number four. We would like to just move it one project down to include priority number five, which is replacing the very last finger on float eight at Thomas Basin, on, on Bar Harbor South. It's a, it's a finger that we've had to basically decommission and take out of service this year. It needs to be replaced. We, we can't cobble it together any longer. So that's, our biggest waitlist isn't that size of boat. That's a, that's a, one finger, that's two slips, no revenue until we replace that finger. So we would like to see just the cut line moved down one to fifty, and the Port Harbor Advisory Board recommended that as well.
Okay, Steve, what we'll do is we'll go through the operations and then we'll go, and go through all your capitals after we do the operational for the Port Harbors.
Okay.
Okay. That, that way we're not trying to flip back.
I, I swear, you were on that page. I thought that's what, it was the right time to tell you what the recommendation was.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So anything else on X eleven? Bring this down to the port summary. Y one? Anything there? Y two, again, gives you the, the matrix for the, the port division. Talked about goals and accomplishments. Y three, operating division, gives you expenditures by category, funding sources, and the full-time equivalent personnel. Y four comes to the operating budget changes for two seventeen. Again, it's, operating expenditures are starting to show up. Y five? So one of the things here that I just highlighted is that you got three point two percent increase in the rents and lease infrastructure. And it's Y five, six forty-five oh four. We'd look at the narrative, I guess, and see what that...
What's the line item on that page?
Six forty-five oh four. It's eighty-one thousand dollars.
Right.
And is that the berth?
The, the major item for that is for the berth four lease. So as passenger goes up, lease goes up. So as passenger goes up, lease goes up.
Mm-hmm, okay. And that would due to the passenger increase for the, or that's what we're looking at probably.
Projected.
Is it?
Thank you. Y-six, getting into the narrative, uh, exclamation. Y-seven. Y-eight.
Yeah, Bob, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, item six five, six-three-five fourteen. And it's the music on the dock. And I, I guess I wasn't impressed last year when we did it. This year they're wanting another, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars to deal with or fifteen hundred dollars. And, uh, from what I heard down there this summer, I still wasn't impressed. Especially when I was on dock three, it was just nothing but noise coming out of that, that canopy. And people couldn't hear and most of the people I saw standing around it was local people cheering them on. It wasn't the passengers. And so I'm in, in the mode of discontinuing that service. So I would make a move that we, uh, delete seventeen thousand five hundred dollars for the, uh, music on the dock.
Can I have a second?
And just to clarify, one just that clears.
Go ahead.
They didn't request the increase in funding. We, and we requested an increase in funding to get a little bit, uh, some more equipment and to run some power over at the KVV, so we're not running extension cords out, out there.
Is there a second for the motions?
Second.
Movement's seconded. Dick, did you want to add anything?
I don't need to add anything. I mean, I could say that, that my experience with it and some other people that were around me and then watching what was, mainly I didn't ever see it, I'll admit, down by the statue where it was down there. But there at berth three, it was, as far as I'm concerned, completely unacceptable.
Anybody else?
Um, I, oh, yeah, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I, uh, I went down there a couple of times listening to those and the QSTIs are pretty poor near it. I don't know if there's anything we can do to improve that. And, uh, I was probably there near the, what I consider the end of the performance and, um, it wasn't very crowded, but I, I, you know, the, the, the group themselves seemed to be having a good time and, uh, the people that were watching them, I guess, enjoyed it.
One of the thing, this was, uh, an historically wet summer, as everybody knows. So I think berth three was used more than, than was anticipated for this program. It was better at berth two, but one of the things we want to change this year, um, when it is nice, the wind's usually out of the north. So my recommendation last year was to put it on the south side of the KVV. And we've opened up some space, uh, in, in order, in addition to having more passenger queuing area at this lunchtime hour, we'll have better space there with those booths out of there, uh, to have, uh, it right there. And people, a lot of people, uh, the locals that came and listened to this were eating their lunch and things like that. Uh, we'll actually have some picnic tables right there for them as well. So I think with, with better weather this year, which hopefully won't get any worse than it did this last summer, I think, uh, the berth two venue on the south side will be much better for this.
Jenny?
I just think it's too new to cut it. I think we need another year to just work through the kinks and see how it goes.
Okay, anybody else?
I just, I agree. I think we need another year at least. I'll be voting no on this motion.
Too new to, yeah, you need to give it some time.
Do we have a camera that looks at that area?
I'm just asking.
We, we, we do.
Okay, so we can kind of see what's going on with it. You can get it, you gotta get that from it, okay.
Call her, please.
Kuz?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes. Oh, no, excuse me. I forgot what I was voting on.
Zingy?
No.
Flora?
No.
Iso?
No.
Kifer?
No.
Gage?
No.
Yeah, I feel six to one. Bob, continue.
Okay, we move on to Y-nine.
Can I go to Y-six? Um, the temporary wages, is this for the, the kids on the dock that do the, I don't know, what are they?
Yeah, temporary wages.
Crossing guards and, is that what this is for?
Yes.
So if we have problems with our CPV funds, is this, is this line item gonna be affected by that? Because I understand that's, okay.
Crossing guards are, are funded out of regular port revenues. Councilman Severson, I had that discussion earlier today.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bob, one other question. In, in our meetings with, uh, Moffett Nichols, they've talked about that exit at berth four. And I know at one time, three or four years ago, we looked at having a crossing guard there. I don't know how much time, but, uh, is it worth thinking about that again? Especially when the ship first hits in, maybe the first hour, hour and a half for people moving in and out.
We have to be really careful on the state highway because crossing guards are not supposed to direct traffic. They're spo- crossing guards are supposed to stop traffic, let people cross and then go back to the curb. I've gone over it several times with DOT personnel at Main and Mill because they, the crossing guards stop traffic, they let them cross, then before they retreat, they let that left turn flush. And they wave them around. They're, technically they're not supposed to do that. That's directing traffic. Right.
I know, but it's worth helpful.
I, I know, and I, I've told, I've told them, come down and talk, you know, we'll stand there and you tell me what we're supposed to do. Uh, the way around it is that, uh, only police personnel are supposed to direct traffic. And when this program started, they worked for the police department. So that's probably why they started doing it. And then, then, once the port took it over, the procedures haven't changed.
Deputized.
It's deputizing. Because they really do a good job.
So, but, but, but taking that situation and then going to berth four, that, that is magnifying something. Because they would definitely be, be directing traffic in and out of there.
Or maybe we take these women who are doing our, that, that.
These women? Do you want to maybe reconsider that statement?
That brings us to Y-ten.
Sorry, you're right, you're right, though, I, I, I do.
What's going on in the room?
I was, I was trying to speak, I, I misspoke. I was gonna say perhaps, perhaps the members of the police academy could, uh, use their new skills to.
Train.
I thought you were a drop out.
I am a drop out.
Let's continue with the budget.
Y-ten? Ending up the narrative, uh, portions for operations division. Y-eleven, that's the port capital budget.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
Explain to me the TWIC readers. Or is everybody that gets on the dock gonna have to have a TWIC card?
The, um, what was approved in two, last year, in two thousand sixteen, August twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, whatever. It was what was finally approved in the congressional record. And that put everybody on the clock for two years. So unless they delay it, uh, August twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, I forget the exact date, two thousand eighteen, uh, all cruise ship terminals that handle over, ships with over a thousand passengers will have to have TWIC readers installed. We do not have single point access here at any of our docks. We will, we will have to write, rewrite our security plan. We will probably be using hand readers. The fight we're having with, uh, the, the Coast Guard basically right now is the only people that are required to do it are gonna be basically my people and the, and the Stevedoring people. Because we don't have single point access, it, it's, it's, it's basically a paperwork drill. Because there's also a record keeping. You have to, you have to basically document with the TWIC reader, everybody that, that accesses it, that has a TWIC card. And then you also have to, has to write to a file. So we've been working with, um, all the other ports in Alaska. Rain Exchange of Alaska has been facilitating this. We've had several teleconferences with prospective vendors trying to figure out which system we would all like to go with so we can all get the same system. But these units are about seven, eight grand apiece and I'm probably gonna need three of them. Uh, one at berth one, two, three, one at berth four and a spare in case one of them craps out. They're just like a really big fancy smartphone.
Well, my biggest concern was not the equipment you're buying, is it's who you're gonna make have a TWIC card? Because I can see somebody going along saying every bus driver, every driver and every person coming on there, you're gonna s-
That would only happen if they forced us to change where our restricted and secure areas are. And we've been very fortunate since I got here, we've negotiated those down to, to the minimum. It wouldn't take much of a security event anywhere in the world, uh, to start pushing that back out again. If they pushed it out to a hundred feet, we're out in the tangas or, or Front Street. If they push it out sixty feet, we're out to the KVV. If that's the case, then yeah, we would have to get TWIC cards for everybody accessing that.
Congressional exception.
So that, that's why we're trying to, to, to maintain our current security plan with just, uh, writing it to include the TWIC readers. Even if it's kind of ridiculous, as long as we can keep them happy. Twenty-five grand is a cheap price to pay for maintaining our, our security area the way it is as far as size.
Mark, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Didn't we decide to hold off on the booths, the new booths for one more year? We're gonna reuse the existing ones?
The current plan, I'm gonna try and get one prototype built so that, well, we can play with it and see what people like in that. And then if that works out, then after this season, we would, we would do some more, but I'd.
Do we know what that number changes then from forty-two to what?
Well, if you leave it at forty-two, it, then next fall, after the season ends, I can, I can get going on getting, you know, some additional booths built rather than wait till, you know, February of next year and cramming it all. One thing, um, when we have a project that's brand new with nothing in it, we can't even spend any money on it till usually about February. Finance has to enter all the information in, they have to give us project accounts and this and that. So it's, a lot of times, if, if it's a, if it's a capital project, we can't spend the money till close to February. So if I wait till February of two thousand nineteen, then you're trying to cram, you know, a couple of months of trying to find, you know, somebody to build these booths for us. So I got, you know, the, the port is well off enough that I, I, I wouldn't mind just leaving that, that forty-two in this year and not, and not have to worry about timing for next winter.
Yes, Steve, one other question on that stricter item is, uh, what are we gonna do with that, uh, storage building and the building that, on berth one that the ShoreX uses? Are we gonna move it this year or are you gonna leave it alone this year?
That's the one I want to prototype. I wanna, I wanna replace that with one of the new ones that will be shared. So a little bit of storage and then ShoreX is to close out. So it'll be something smaller and nicer looking than the one that's down there.
Well, let me ask you a different question. Why not move your storage to another, put another building right behind your, your current security shack up here? Because that sets in between, you, you don't, you have to haul those supplies clear up there. And that would make it even closer to the places that you're serving if your storage was there rather than clear down at the other end.
We looked at moving it up there before we put it down there. That, that seemed to be kind of the place that wasn't in the way as much as anyplace else.
Yeah, but what you want to do is build a new one that matches the security shack. Don't just move that, that one there, but build it something that matches and fits your needs. Because as you're driving down that driveway, the only thing it takes out is just a little bit of room where maybe one van parks over there on the left-hand side.
We can look at doing that.
I'd, I'd look at that, but that consolidates your operation. And then the little shack you're gonna build can still be a prototype for booths or whatever.
If you guys are okay with, um, leaving the forty-two in and then we can use, we can tap that for this little building and though it wouldn't be a, a vendor booth. Or we can, we can adjust the program a different way.
If you want to pro, if you want, to me, if you want to prototype a vendor booth, use the first year's vendor booth for the ShoreXs down there and see how it works. But they do, the, the vendors do need a place because that one's the only place they're not gonna have a place to hide from the weather.
No, I, and, and I will do that, but if we want, if we want to then put a little storage, a nicer looking little storage building next to the current port security building, that's not currently in the budget, but if, if, is it all right if I?
You need the storage and to me, I would, I would accept it myself because I think that makes the most sense.
So if you leave the forty-two in, I'll, I'll do that, that other, I'll do two buildings in for this season. And then, uh, and then we'll re, we'll reshuffle and see if we need anything more for next year if we do the rest of the booths.
Makes, it makes the most sense to me.
Yep, okay.
So when you talk about the, the parameters of the TWICs, uh, interest points or card or distance, is that from the ship or, uh, the sixty feet, is it from the ship onto the port? Or is it, what do they measure from?
I'm a little uncomfortable talking about all the security stuff in public.
I, I agree, okay, I'll find that.
But, um, right now, we're not at sixty.
What I was, what I was gonna ask the next question is, when we potentially reconfigure the docks with the floats and stuff, does the area move out?
What Juno did when they did their two berths last year, uh, the Coast Guard has enforced single point access for them at the top of the ramps there, as, as far as I understand. What makes it so unique here is we let the vehicles so close to the ships. That, that, that just doesn't happen really anywhere else at, at a port our size. So, um, but yeah, we would, we would basically go to single point access. Now, I don't agree with exactly what the Coast Guard's done with Juno, I think they kind of screwed them. We're hoping that, yeah, when, when they meet with us down here, once we get the new ber- uh, berths worked out, that we, we aren't to that extreme up there. But it will alleviate some of the fears we have, um, if some mandatory distances come, come along that aren't as flexible as what they are right now.
Thank you.
So my question is on the payments in lieu of taxes. So.
That's a Bob question.
You have the, the four hundred and eighty-five. My understanding is, yeah, berth four gets taxed, but we give it back. So what is that? What's the difference between the tax and the, um, in lieu of payment? Y-ten?
The three nineteen, uh, is what's assessed against port by the city. That supports general fund, goes back to the, the city. The hundred and sixty-six is what we're projecting that we will have to reimburse, uh, Ketchikan Dock Company for the property taxes paid on berth four in accordance with the terms and provisions of the berth four lease.
So why do, why do we not tax the other, on the other berth versus in lieu of payment?
Because. Berth one, two and three don't, they aren't taxed, they're, they're.
Publicly owned.
They're publicly owned, so that, uh, they don't get taxed.
I was just thinking.
But the, the port is contributing to the city's general fund through this payment in lieu of taxes for its, its share of, you know.
What would have been taxed?
Right. Berth four is separate because it i- is private, it is taxed, but as part of, part of the lease that was approved back in two thousand and seven, we, we reimburse them for those, actually, we pay the taxes directly, I think. Berth four, we actually make the tax payment straight. Yeah, so we don't reimburse them, we, they give us the tax bills and then we pay them.
And so we pay it all? There's no.
Currently, the, the current lease with berth four, we pay the taxes on those parcels that, that we lease, not on everything they have down there, but the ones that we lease.
All right, we are on Y-ten, moving to, and we just finished the capital also on Y-eleven. I was just down to what's next.
We go back to the cap.
Let me interrupt for just a minute because, uh, my time limit's about out. When is the next meeting?
Monday.
Monday at seven? And we'll start in on, how, where are we on the, I hate to say, I pick at my budget, I haven't even ready yet, it's already this weekend. Where are we at other than finishing ports and harbor, where are we at after that?
We have the first part of the capital budget to review up through the museum department. We reviewed everything after that at the last meeting. And then we start deliberations on the KPU budget.
Okay. I just want to thank everybody for, um, being so nice. I, um, am so thrilled to be back. I feel good. Other than I'm, I'm exhausted all the time in which the doctor says it's gonna last for a while. One day I'll wake up and I'll be gone, he says. But I spent all day resting until I come to this meeting too last night, so I feel good. And God's been blessing me with healing and it's just amazing, so. It's rough, I've got to gain 20 pounds and I hope to be very Christmas.
We'll bring you cookies.
Stand your cane, Leo.
Yeah, that's the girl.
I'll owe you 20 pounds.
Yeah, exactly. I ain't losing 20, so here you go.
All right, I thank you, I'm going to take off.
All right.
Good deal.
I appreciate you guys putting in for me.
Okay, happy birthday, Mayor.
Happy birthday.
All right, so that brings us back. We, oh, we go to the capital budget for general government. And we go down to the harbor portion of that. And that starts on page 110, which is O1. So O1 has a list of the capital projects out to 2022. So we move into O2, Bar Harbor ramp replacement.
Bob, on O1, Steve requested that we drop that down to priority five. So I would move if we need a motion.
We do.
That we add priority five to the capital list for the harbors.
Moving and moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Katie, would you call the rule?
Gage?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seiverton?
Yes.
Kuth?
Yes.
That passes. Okay, then we move to O2, that was the ramp replacement. Boat number 1011, electric services. So, yes, go ahead.
So how does, on the ADA, how does that work for the game lines?
If it's fixed, it's supposed to meet one and 12.
All right.
If it's floating, you're supposed to try to meet one and 12, but you don't have to be any longer than 80 feet. So with our range, with our range of tides here, yeah, on a minus tide, 80 feet is not going to, you know, be meet one and 12 anyway. But what, what the feds have said is that basically they recognize that to try to meet one and 12 on a 25-foot range of tide, it would be very difficult and expensive and long and that. So that's why we've been going through, and you'll see a lot of 80-foot ramps now in Alaska. On this one, the preferred alternative is probably going to be 96. And the reason is, if you look at Bar Harbor ramp three, which is the one right next to my office there, the trestle going out is steel piles and a concrete deck. And we've run the numbers a couple of different ways. Do we cut it back and then rebuild out and make it an 80-foot ramp down? Or do we cut it back to, you know, the one, the second set of piles, which would be a 96-foot ramp? The ramp would be more expensive, but you don't have to rebuild the deck going out. And we've looked at those numbers and it's actually cheaper to go with a 96-foot ramp. So that, that one, if we get the money from the state to, you know, for the 50-50 grant, that one will be the, the most ADA-friendly one we have at 96 feet.
So what materials are those made out of? Are they all metal?
Yeah, usually aluminum. And with the decking, it's a composite decking.
Oh, okay, so they've added the composite.
Yeah, if you want to see the two newest ones, we added last year right down on Thomas Basin. That's a good example of what we've basically kind of settled on as our preferred alternative.
The only reason I'm asking is because the last time I went down one of those, it was at a minus tide and it was very, the metal gets really slick.
Oh, yeah, that, that's not, that wasn't on one of our new ones.
Oh, okay.
The newest ones we have are the ones right behind the old Bar Harbor restaurant on ramp two.
Right.
And then the ones down here at Thomas Basin, we put those in the last couple of years. I would go down there on a minus tide and you'll see a huge difference. The ones at Thomas Basin were 50 footers, so they're 30 feet longer now.
So now they're 80?
They're, they're 80. The ones we have left to do, Bar Harbor North is the only harbor we do not have one, at least one ADA ramp. Those are both 66. I believe the one behind the Highliner is still the only 50-footer we have left. That's, that one's really steep. But we do have the 80-footer now at ramp two and then at the Madison ramp. That one the state put in back, it was the newest of the old ones. And depending on where you measure from, I measured it like 76. But if you went like from tip to tip on where the transition plates are, it's probably an 80, 80 footer. So maybe they thought it was 80-footer when they put it in. Or maybe someone said, yeah, that qualifies as an 80-footer and that makes it ADA compliant. I don't know. So, but I never claimed that Bar Harbor South was ADA compliant until we put the one at ramp two, two years ago. Because I wasn't, I didn't want to say it was ADA compliant and have somebody come and say, no, it's 76. It doesn't mean it, if they measured it the way I thought it probably should be measured.
Oh, okay.
And they're all covered too, correct?
The new ones are covered. The new ones are covered. The only new one that we did not cover is the one out at Canute's Cove, which we did back in 2008, I believe. And there just wasn't money. We were, we were scraping money to get that project funded and that was one of the things we cut, was a cover on that one.
So the one where the Highliner is will be covered if it's replaced?
If we replace it, we'll, yes, that's a ways out because Bar Harbor South now has one ADA compliant ramp and one that's maybe ADA compliant, so that would be a third gangway into that one. But, you know, I don't know when we'll have money to do something like that.
Okay. Funding sources, when we talk about a general obligation bond, do we have to go out for a bond? Or do we have?
No, this is, this is the last of the $5 million bond. That's, that's what we're holding it for because this was one of the projects that was listed on the bond. Apply whatever it was called, description.
Okay. Any further, O3? Thomas Basin float rehabilitation. You can do this in-house?
We're doing it in-house. We were going to do it this year and we ran into issues that we hadn't anticipated with the electrical in that when we did ramp one in Bar Harbor South the year before, our guys did it and it was a straight shot, they could do 40 feet a day or 20 feet a day and just march along. There was no electrical. Here, when they went to do berth three, we had talked to KPU Electric, you know, no problem. But then when it came actually time to schedule it, say, okay, the guys are going to work this week down there. Can you have a guy available to hook, you know, unhook them, hook them back up, unhook them, hook them back up? And it was like, ah, no, we're short, we can't do that. So we concentrated on Bar Harbor North concrete this summer and did that. So we're going to regroup and make another run at it this, this next year. And hopefully we can schedule it better with electricians. Maybe we have to bring in outside help, I don't know. But my guys can't disconnect the pedestals and hook them back up again.
I get that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so Steve, on this one here, when you say your guys are going to do it, that means they're already paid for and this right here is probably for either contract you may have to do or materials, the money.
This was going to be a carryover. I know there was some finagling that created the new funding thing. Now, I forget why it was said new funding, but this was a $35,000 project last year and we bought materials for it. We started buying materials for it. I can't remember why it showed up as new funding for 11 this year.
But normally that's what this would be, is your, your people are paid for, your labors. But if you needed something, it would be materials and/or contractor to something you can't do.
Bob said they changed the source of the funding for part of it. That's why it's shown as a new funding in 2018. But this was just a carryover from last year. It was a $35,000 project that was approved in 2017's budget. But this, this, the money, the $35,000 is for, for buying stuff. And if we do have to rent stuff or hire somebody to help with something, like one of the things we do is we'll hire the divers to come in, scrape the tube worms and insert flotation. Once, once we get the float rebuilt, we'll hire the diver to come in and they might have to insert some billets here and there to get everything nice and level. So, but it does not fund my guys.
No, that's what I meant. It's just funding the divers and if you have to rent something.
Yeah, this is, this is buying stuff.
Yeah.
Hiring somebody to do specialty work or renting, renting equipment or that. Or they might, if they buy a tool specifically for this job, they'll buy it out of the project. But that's, that's rare.
Now, this may be a question for Bob, but whenever they do work on one of those docks down there, is that their time charged against this dock so that we know what that dock's costing us to maintain?
We have the ability in the system to track their time. I don't know if they're coding their time to do a particular project or not. But the funding for their compensation is already budgeted for in salary and wages. So it's included in another part of the budget. Steve, correct? Just the budget for material and equipment needed to get the work done that's being done by our in-house staff.
Yeah, but in the big picture, you said the right words for me. You said that we have the ability, but we do not know what each one of those docks may, or what do you want to call it? Harbors may be costing us because it's all in a pack, except for maybe a specific project.
These employees hourly, salary?
These are all hourly employees, but we aren't currently tracking them.
Okay.
I know that our wages are substantially less than Davis Bacon or State Fairland wage.
Wouldn't worry about the wages, I was worried about what we know whether what's costing us. Okay, thank you.
It's, it's, stuff like this, it's definitely cheaper to do it in-house.
Oh, no, I agree with you.
And that's, and we've been, yeah. And the Port Harbor Advisory Board especially has been after us to do more stuff in-house, especially now that we have the maintenance crew to do it.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's good.
Four?
Actually, I just wanted to, O3. Apologize in advance for this one. Every budget always, there's always one, one oddly misspelled word that always gets my attention. And you get, you get the prize, it's time, Mr. Corporal. Flotation, F-L-O-A-T-A. It's not floatations, flotation, F-L-O-T-A. It's not floatation. Which were consistent, it's happened a couple of times.
Okay, I fat fingered it probably and then just copied it.
Or perhaps you got, you know, a spell check between it or whatever. But it was appropriate, flotation's what we're talking about, but it's not.
Got you.
I'll show it to you.
Four?
Better than budget.
That's a security camera upgrade. O5, Thomas Basin current diverter repair.
You don't see how bad that one is unless you actually go down there on a minus tide.
See, there's nothing to bother.
There's quite a bit of it missing, so.
So then that puts us into some of the projects that go into 19. Yeah, we probably don't have to turn ourselves around at this point as we look forward though. So anything else in the O sections?
One thing, one thing to note on the, those out-year projects. There, I specifically put some smaller ones in there because I want to try and go after some, that 50-50 harbor grant leftover money. Because they only fully fund projects and when they do that, last year there was no leftover money from that year, but there was some leftover money from the year before and a small project up north got funded. So I want to put in a couple of little dinky ones and 50,000 is a minimum. If I can put some of these electrical things in there and if we can get some crumbs during some of these partial funding things, it's some money that we don't have to put in. So that's why these are kind of, these kind of popped up, so.
Great. We come down to the port, P1.
So... This was going to be a big presentation to you guys when I drafted it up like three, three months ago. We had all this stuff planned for 2018 and now we've awarded half of it in 2017.
Rock pinnacle removal? So you have done some preliminary sampling and have an idea of what you have down there?
Yeah, and, and just today, and I didn't get a chance to open the boxes, but they delivered the report on that. So I'll probably open those boxes tomorrow morning and I'll get those out to Carl so we can get those disseminated. Yeah, there's no overburden out there, unfortunately. It's rock.
We don't have a port?
I don't have a port.
You don't have a port on yours? On your machine?
It stopped, went blank.
You know, we had a couple of those last year. I don't know why I didn't download it.
It was that, it was that no vote on the music.
Okay, P3 is berth one, two, expansion.
And that was using the middle estimate, I believe, for option B.
One and two.
Of one and two, right. But we're coming back to you guys after the first of the year to get that pinned down so they can actually really start running with the design work.
Yeah. And it was amazing that the option before that, there was only a few million dollar difference. And what we're going to gain is amazing.
Yeah, if you extend it out, you're basically just looking like another dolphin, more or less, because the barges are going to be the same size, the dolphins that hold the barges are going to be the same size. The transfer bridges are going to be the same size. It depends on how far out do you want to push it.
So the January portion, they'll come back and we'll decide where we're going to go and then we'll start really working at the impacts on Thomas Basin and other things if we were going to go with berth one. Is that correct?
Correct.
P4, security cameras, again, we have already spoke with those earlier. P5, TWIC readers, again, we spoke with those. And then P6 with the dock vendor booth. So anything else on ports and harbors, any questions? There are none, thanks Steve. So manager's report, you already did that? So move this down, city attorney file, you know, in here, future agenda items. So this is where I want to talk about establishing ordinances to mirror the ones we have for retail stores and limit the cultivation to two within the city limits and then zero for manufacturing. So I'd like to see those move forward. Do I have forehands? And so can we direct, we'll direct council to go ahead and start formulating some of that stuff. Mayor, your council comments, Nick?
Uh, nothing.
I just wanted to make it official, I dropped out of police academy. It seems to be a real concern of a lot of people. My work schedule, a lot of what I do takes me into the night and I do have to sleep on occasion. I hadn't really factored in the budget and everything else that I do, so it, something had to go and unfortunately... And unfortunately, even though I'm really interested in doing that, it wasn't something that I could continue. I also would ask that, I don't know how many people are left listening, but even the people at this table, it's the holidays. And if you know seniors that are living alone, your neighbors, you may think that because they have family, that people are looking in on them. It's not always the case. I would really ask you to just give them, you know, you don't even, sometimes they don't want to visit, but a phone call would be really nice. And I would hope that some of you would, would do that. It's really, really important this time of year. That's all I have.
Emily?
Yes. So, apparently this got thrown at us by the state. The, the Alaska Office of Substance Misuse and Addiction Prevention is hosting an interactive day of discussion about the current responses to opioid misuse in Ketchikan. So they're doing a coffee and light lunch at Kate Fox from eight AM to three thirty PM on Wednesday, December thirteenth. So, if anybody, I, I gave everybody one, is interested or has some stuff they want to bring to them. They also, on there, they also have their webpage and they also have an email address, so.
Julie?
I am not dropping out of the, and, and sleep is overrated, so that's all from me.
Uh-oh. I need to move because I'm about to.
I'm glad you dropped out. I'm sorry you had to drop out. And there's always police academy too.
Maybe I'll join you in that one. That would be fun.
I, I, I'm personally looking forward to the point where we actually run berth one, actually to Whiskey Cove, we'll get access to Penny.
Mark?
Nothing, Mark.
I have, I have something. Earlier, we had the op, or, or to, I guess, put together a meeting with the city council and the assembly to speak with FEMA in regards to the flood plain issue that they're going to have an open house, I believe it's on the twenty-first. So just, just a couple of things that, and, and we haven't set up that meeting, but, that we should think about is the mapping area is going to grow from a small area within the city of Ketchikan boundaries to the full extent of the roadage system of the borough. So those individuals that are out of the flood plain now, most likely will be in and will be required by insurance. They do allow for private insurers to give them money. But a couple of things that are in there that are a concern, as we know, on the coast of Ketchikan where people are near the water, they stack up these big rock walls, they fill behind them and they build on them. That'll no longer be allowed under some of the regulations, it sounds like. They're going to split it up a little bit. The Saxman will have their own section, Ketchikan and that kind of stuff. And we have one community number, so they're going to split those numbers up, which will do a little bit. The new map will identify velocity zones, which brings more regulatory requirements to the borough. And so there, there are some other questions about the rates and the fact that they don't tend to use historic data. In other words, if you've never had a flood, that doesn't make a difference to new rates. Part of this is FEMA is broke right now. They've had to fund, you know, Texas, they had to fund Florida and they, and Puerto Rico. And so they're broadening, I think, their base. So it, it doesn't relate to geological facts in regards to the areas where you're in. So I think there's some things that are really going to affect our community. And again, if we had a community further north that opted out of the flood plain rules with FEMA, that community cannot get Freddie, Fannie, HUD, the veteran, federal housing loans because they're not opted in. So there, there's a lot of things like this. So I just, if there's forehands, we will work with the borough to see if we can set up a meeting so that we can discuss these issues. I think it's going to be important to the community. And we may even bring it before the cooperative relations because I think it's going to affect.
When I, when I went to the meeting, one of the things is they're already, the banks are already having to talk to the people who are within those zones about their insurance rates and all of that. So it's already... So I figured that's why, one of the reasons I said we should probably definitely have them up.
All right.
Mr. Bob? Yes. On that same topic, I, I think that between the borough and the city, we ought to write a joint letter to the federal delegation. This is obvious regulatory overreach with no common sense in it at all. And see if they can effectively put a, effectively put a stop to it, except where it makes sense. I mean, if you're in a flood zone, fine, but if you're on a hillside up here, it doesn't make any sense. Yeah, so it's concerning. We need to, the federal delegation's probably the only people to even put a stop to it.
Anyway, if we, we can move that forward, I think that'd be a good point. So that brings us to item fifteen, what is a request for an executive session, annual evaluation of the city clerk. Do I have a motion, please? Don't move.
It's your summary. It will take me two minutes.
Here.
I move the city council, I move the city council into, to, into executive session. I, I, I'm merely reading this. I move the city council to, into executive session in accordance, in accordance with KMC two point zero four point zero two five A two for the purpose of conducting the annual evaluation of the city clerk, which may involve discussions of, quote, "subjects that tend to prejudice the reputation and character of any person, provided the person may request a public discussion," unquote.
Second?
Through the segment?
Do you want this to be in public?
Call the rule, please.
Coos?
Yes.
Seaverton?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Zingy?
Okay, we will move into executive session.
Dangerous tonight.
All those that don't have to stay can go home.
We, we take into account that, that mistake.
We're back on, thank you. So, we met in executive session, we had discussions in regards to the evaluation of our clerk and we will move forward with the process. So, we've gone through everything else, so I need to, I guess, we have to adjourn.
So move.
Steve, manager, thank you.